So.
Too many pockets. Probably sitting on.
You wanna buy it? You wanna buy?
No, no, no.
You got concerns about?
I can't.
You got concerns about getting kicked out at all or?
No.
No. It's you would assume somebody's on.
Go cross side.
Rent or not, so.
Well, if you have somebody in there that use the rent all the time.
If that got to be a problem, I would probably. I want relocated.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Hutchinson City Council for Tuesday, February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Call a meeting to order. Approve the council agenda. Any agenda additions or corrections?
Mayor Council, I don't have any additions or corrections for you.
I'll make a motion to approve them.
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Tim to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, carried. Invitation is from River Church Hutchinson. Good evening Pastor Dave, how are you?
Doing good. How are you guys tonight? Very good. Mayor, council members, great to have you guys here. Thank you for everything you do. Let's pray. Father God, we just thank you, Lord, for this opportunity we have to come and represent, Lord, the great uh people here of the city of Hutchinson and the surrounding areas and, Lord, right now, we just ask uh your wisdom upon us. Lord, we thank you for grace upon each and every single person here. Lord, we thank you for your protection upon uh our our police force, Lord, and the first responders. Lord, that uh they would just continue to to lead and guide us, Lord, and in the path that you have for us. And, Lord, we thank you uh for your hand upon this city. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Thank you. Next of pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Recognition of gifts, donations, and community service to the city. Does anybody have anything tonight? All right, we do have a resolution underneath there. Uh resolution number one, five, five, six, nine. Resolution accepting cash donations from Steve Cook K Nelson and Midkey for Public Arts.
Make a motion to accept their donations?
Okay.
Motion by Chad, second by Dave to accept the donations. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Uh public comment, citizens addressing the council, just please come forward and state your name and address. All right, we have approval of minutes. We have the regular meeting minutes of January twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Tim, second by Chad to approve the minutes. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Uh consent agenda, this will be done with one motion unless somebody pulls something off for discussion. A is approval of issuing temporary liquor license to the Hutchinson J C's on March eleventh, two thousand twenty-three at the McLeod County Fairgrounds. Uh B is approval or issuing short-term gambling license to the Hutchinson Rotary Foundation on May fifth, two thousand twenty-three at Arts Place. C is approval of a premise permit application for Grounden Baseball Association at the River House Kitchen and Drinks located at one twenty-two Main Street South. Uh D is approval of items for Roberts Road Southwest Project, letting number one, project number twenty-three oh one. We have a resolution underneath there would be resolution number one, five, five, six, one. Resolution declaring costs to be assessed in ordering preparation of proposed assessments. And resolution number one, five, five, six, two, resolution for hearing on proposed assessments. Uh E is approval of items for the twen- two thousand twenty-three pavement improvement projects, letting number two, projects number twenty-two dash oh two, twenty-two dash oh three, and twenty-three dash oh two. Uh we have resolutions underneath there. Uh resolution number one, five, five, six, three. Resolution declaring costs to be assessed in order in preparation of proposed assessments. And resolution number one, five, five, six, four, resolution for hearing on proposed assessments. F is uh approval of items for Jefferson Street Southeast Project, letting number four, project number twenty-three dash oh five. And we have uh resolutions underneath there would be resolution number one, five, five, six, five. Resolution declaring costs to be assessed in ordering preparation of proposed assessments. And resolution number one, five, five, six, six, resolution for hearing on proposed assessments. G is approve of items for Uptown Grand Sanitary Sewer realignment, letting number five, project number twenty-three dash oh six. Then we have resolutions underneath there, that is one, five, five, six, seven. Resolution ordering preparation of reports on re- uh improvements. And resolution number one, five, five, six, eight. Resolution receiving reports and calling for hearings on improvements. And H is claims appropriation and contract payments. Anything anybody wants pulled off? Make a motion approved?
I'll second.
Motion by Dave, second by Chad to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, carried. Uh we do have a public hearing at six, but uh we'll skip down and go to update from the Public Arts Commission on the twenty, two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four sculpture stroll.
Hi there. Good evening.
Good evening.
Sorry about that. Um so my uh wing people aren't here. Pat May serves on the Public Arts Council as does Lynn Newman and Dan Jokum, so I'm gonna represent everybody tonight. Um.
That's why they told me they weren't coming tonight.
They didn't tell me. So um alright, so the Public Arts Council, our commission is responsible for many different things involving public arts for the city, and we're all appointed by the mayor. But one of the most noticeable projects that we do each year is the Sculpture Stroll. We um we began the stroll over a decade ago and um and it has grown from eight sculptures that rotate up to eleven that we're responsible for, including two additional, so thirteen rotating sculptures. Um and they come in every year during May, and then in April they depart, so they're just on loan to us. And we receive submissions from artists all over the country to be a part of our stroll. The um and then we get them. The deadline is January thirty-first. We put together a um a selection kind of panel, and then we spend about three to four hours going over each of the sculptures and um and whether or not they would fit our stroll. And then we decide on the final eleven and figure out where they're going to go. So um behind me, you'll see, these are the pieces that were selected for this year. I'm sorry. In your packet online, it'll be a little bit more clear to see. Um we received thirty-one submissions this year for the eleven spaces. Um it's actually, Matt said, wow, it's a little bit less than last year. We had, I think, close to fifty last year. Um and we we do a lot of promotion to encourage artists all over to um submit. There's no cost to submit. We've had um local artists from Hutchinson and people as far away as Georgia. Um they are responsible for delivering their artwork um and helping us install it, and Randy and Public um and Park and Rec do all the installations. I mentioned there are two spaces that are sponsored. The sculpture that's at Citizens Bank Park and the sculpture that is at Ridgewater College are paid for and selected by Ridgewater and Citizens Bank. We give them all of the um submissions after we've chosen, so you'll be seeing those later. Um we met last week, and these are the eleven we chose. I um we try and get a very big arrangement, so we want different mediums from steel, aluminum, glass, wood, um to different sizes. This year, we have two that are over twelve feet tall, um and we have other ones that are under two feet tall. Um those are the ones that go on the blocks that are um on Main Street. We also try and get an a different kind of array of colors versus natural. Ones that move, ones that are modern, classic. We're we're trying to make sure that the Sculpture Strolls got a little bit of something for everybody, and we like the ones that make you stop and go hmm a little bit too. So um every year, we all come into the meeting with our favorites, and we don't all get what we wanted. But this year, one of the ones that was um the number one by more than half of the commission was um a first-timer named Jody Bliss, What It Takes, and that picture does no justice to it. It's uh nine foot tall, it's thorny and has um steel roses, and then there's a birdcage in the middle, and there's this gorgeous bird that's colorful pettinet on the inside of it, and that'll be at the farmer's market. Some of these are returners. They've been in our stroll before. Others are first timers, and um the one that looks like clouts, the second one in um from Ryan and James Peterson, that is a father-son duo, which is really cool. Um and we we just try and make sure that there's gonna be really good pieces to fit where they're going to be on the stroll, so we don't want anything that's going to blend into the environment. So we wouldn't pick something that was brown and stick it in the middle of um natural grasses. It would be lost, so we would pick something really colorful for that spot. Um and another example is um the one that we're putting on the block by Dairy Queen, um which is the dog with the crown, and he's a reclaimed piece. We chose that one because we thought it would get the kids really interested. Um and the one um this year, we started awarding a judges' award, which is the donation that was um uh the resolution that was approved earlier, so there's five hundred dollars is given to um the artist who has the uh receives the judges' award, and we have a small panel of independent judges that look at all of the art. And then we also have the People's Choice Award. So this year, Deb Zeller's piece right here at the church won People's Choice. And um and then the one that looks like a multi-sided die that's all etched next to the library won the judges' choice. And the one that is um gonna be at Library Square this year that looks like the state of Minnesota was the judges' choice winner, and he submitted again, and that one's gonna be really neat to see. Um it's about eight feet tall, so again, these photos don't do it justice. So um these are before you tonight for your approval, and we um like I said, we have two more to be selected by Citizens Bank and Ridgewater. Um but I I think that the sculptures, you know, change every year, get people really excited, and like I said, our commission works really hard to make sure that they're unique and exciting and um and talking points for people when they go all around town. Be happy to take any questions.
Is there gonna be any more spots you're looking at, Morgan, or not?
To expand the stroll? So maybe, thank you for asking. There where when we have a really large sculpture, we put it on along the river where we had the shark. Um as you'll remember, that was almost um I think it was fourteen feet wide. And so that's not an official location, but because we had that piece um and it needed a bigger than a five-foot pad, we chose that river spot. The piece that was before the shark was the um was the fifteen-foot bicycle. And he was there two years in a row because of the pandemic. We we um had a hard time getting artists to come pick their pieces up, so the bike was there for two years. So for three years in a row, we used that larger space. And and we, instead of having another piece at the formerly known Shopko pad, now Mitkey pad, we we didn't use that space for those years because our budget is limited. But we're always interested in adding more and finding more sponsors like Citizens and Ridgewater who um are local businesses who would wanna pa- partner with Public Arts to put a piece on their private property. Where the school is approached us about having students make pieces, um a piece each year and installing it in front of one of the school locations, which would be really interesting to have their metal department do that. Other questions?
That shark was really dramatic. My boys enjoyed that a lot.
I I really liked the shark too. I think it um so each of the pieces is for sale. And if someone were to purchase it, twenty-five percent commission goes back to the Public Arts Fund, and then the artist gets seventy-five percent. And a lot of people approached us to try and purchase the shark, but it was over fifty thousand dollars. But it would have been pretty cool to keep that one in town.
My oldest son approached us as parents and wanted to buy the shark, but then we told him about the price tag is wrong, so.
It it's a little steep, but it was a really neat piece. Unfortunately, that artist has retired and is no longer participating in Sculpture Strolls. He submitted one last year that we would have selected had he kept it in of a Viking ship that was twice as big as the shark. Um but unfortunately, another town got it before we did, and so the Viking ship went to that stroll, and then he retired, and I really wanted that Viking ship. The bull was also really cool.
Bull was really cool.
I do think um Surrender, which is going to be here in your yard um at the church, that one is a thirteen-foot tall piece, and it's um really beautiful up close.
I would just like to to know um and thank the the Public Arts Commission for the sculpture show. We do get a ton of comments about how well-received that is within the within the community, so. And just a point of clarification, there's no action needed from the from the council. Um we kinda give the authority for the Public Arts Commission to select it, but appreciate you just bringing it forth and presenting it for council's knowledge anyways, so.
Thank you. All of these folks have agreed. If you, as long as you guys agree, they are gonna show up starting May first, and so the new sculptures will kind of bloom like the flowers, so keep your eye out.
I think it's great how the sculpture sc- stroll has grown. You know, like it started out pretty slow, but you know, like the sculptures have gotten a lot more dramatic, you know, kind of across the board, but it's just been, it's been a great program.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's nice at the Parks Department. Uh I know they always give you a big hand to get them installed, so.
Yeah, Randy and Lynn are, and Sarah, but he also comes to the selection committee to make sure we don't pick anything that's too crazy.
Randy's a super talented dude when it comes to fabricating himself. He is as good as he gets.
Well, and we did um spend, and you saw the the expenditure for it a little bit earlier in the year. We used some of our restoration dollars to repair the permanent pieces. And so well, the that was a two-year project, so there'll be even more um repairs being done to the, I think we have twenty permanent pieces, so you'll see him out there working again.
Alright, thanks, Morgan. Mike? Chief Schuman? Put the pressure on ya.
Good evening, Mayor Council. Uh I will be going over the annual report for twenty twenty-two. So I've got a hard copy in front of you, and I think it was included in your packets, too, correct? Um I will say I'll try to keep it ten, fifteen minutes, but as we go through, it'll kinda do it page by page and just hit some of the high points. But feel free to ask questions uh anytime as we go through here, so. Uh so on the front page, that's this picture of our new newest truck. That's our gra- uh rescue truck, and we did add the uh notation on every truck of all the townships and the cities that we serve is on every truck now, so it's kind of a nice addition to just to show our appreciation to everybody that supports us. Okay, uh page one, our mission is is simple, to help people. Um we focus on pride, honor, and integrity and try to kind of bring that forward to everything we do, whether it's training or calls, etc. Um a lot of the points on the paragraph underneath there, that's from myself and the other chief officers, just a few highlights from the year, but I'll kinda touch on them as I go through uh uh the next pages here. Page two, typically, we dedicate the report to either a retired firefighter or somebody uh one of our retired that has passed away during the year. Uh thankfully, we had neither of those in twenty twenty-two. Um so in essence, we're just dedicating it to all that have uh all the firefighters, all the retired firefighters that have um served this community and our organization uh during the past history as far as we can go back, so. Uh peer recognition, we we give out awards each year for our firefighters that kinda go above and beyond, whether it's uh participation or engagement or special projects. And distinguished service was Hugo Reyes Jimenez and Ben Schmidt. Uh Ben is on his second year and now his third year of one hundred percent attendance at every training. So however, he was sick last week, so he will not make four years in a row. We were worried about him. We, everybody was calling to make sure he was okay, cuz he hasn't missed it in three years. Um.
Can't let him call in on a Zoom meeting, just uh keep the streak alive?
He did, he did ask. App- he was like, I'm like, no, I'm not gonna do that, but. Exactly. Uh Officer of the Year was Chris Dostal. Um Chris has been very active in um he's n- he's new in his position. He's in his second year as a lieutenant. And he has done a um tremendous amount of work out of our training site, and um as you kinda mentioned with Randy uh for the Parks Department, that's kinda who, that's our Randy as far as just building stuff, making stuff, fixing things. Um he's, he kinda does it all, so. And then Firefighter of the Year, Tony McAdams. Uh Tony came to us from New Ulm Fire Department uh where he started his career, and then he's been with us now for six years, I think. Um just had an outstanding year, but heavily involved in everything, so. Alright, uh page three, just a couple uh, we tried to put a lot of pictures this year and and hit some of the highlights. Our open house was uh, we had great weather, another successful event. Um Fireman's Park, obviously, everybody in this room is very familiar with that project. Um and we, and the fundraising that went into getting that accomplished. On page four. Yeah, let's see here. Uh I'll touch on Fireman's Park more in just a minute. Um page four, our special events. Uh we we have a lot of participation with the Reach Program through the high school. Um with the Chad Greenway Camp, the Spooky Sprint, uh and other activities. This year we'll be um doing the uh or involved in the Polar Plunge. We did that last year uh as well, and and just a handful of other um events throughout the year with different organizations. So we've had uh a lot of success and a lot of support from from different groups, and we try to give back that support whenever we can. Page five, some accomplishments. We made a lot of improvements, and this goes back to Chris Dostal out at our training site, a lot of uh uh physical components out there that we improved or added or or made some alterations to. Um we re- acquired the vacant lot to the north. Uh thank you to those in this room for kinda helping with that project as well. Um that will be, we'll be working on hopefully this year or next year, getting, taking the next step on that as far as getting the parking lot completed, fixing some drainage issues, etc. Been working closely with the Sheriff's Department with the new communications equipment. Uh all the fire departments in the county are getting new portable radios, new radios in their trucks. All law enforcement is getting new radios. Uh so that is a big project. We've been um we've been heavily involved in that and trying to get some of the things tweaked for all the fire departments in the in the county. And then um last year was the first year of the new burn pin- burn permit process for the county. We've uh went away from the paper system and started the electronic or the call and burn permit system, and that has been well-received and um by everybody, the citizens as well as the township representatives, so that's, that will continue uh hopefully forever or past me anyway. Uh we did a hiring this year and uh just to kinda tell you how we do that, we, every other year, we do a hiring, and that is usually kinda driven by retirements or just the attrition in the fire service, meaning people have a job change, life change, etc. Every year or two, we usually have somebody that that steps down for one of those various reasons, so we do a hiring every other year. That gives us a chance to hire a group, get them trained through their Fire One, Fire Two, get them certified, get them licensed, get them to some level of proficiency before we start with the next group, and that that model has worked well for us. This year, we had uh sixteen applicants that came on our orientation night, which is good. Usually, we get about six to ten, so we had sixteen. We ended up hiring four. Um and they are in the process right now of of getting all their training done. They, we've worked with an outside vendor for the uh the training, and we're actually the host location, so they're not having to drive anywhere, so they they do training every uh every, well, they come to our training on Mondays, and then Tuesday and Wednesday, they have training at the fire station from six to ten every night, and then on uh on occasional Saturday, but we've got about eighteen firefighters from around the area, Dassel, uh Cosmos, Litchfield, uh Silver Lake, etc. So we've got a good cross-section of some of our neighboring fire departments all getting trained at our fire station, so that's been working really well. Um and then we did a live burn training at a uh another uh house south of town. There's been some opportunities. We haven't done those for quite a while. And uh the state through some of their grant program has has got a, got some options for us to partially pay for that, so that's been very helpful uh for us, so we get, gets us a chance to get into a a different structure besides our burn containers out at our training site. We get in an actual house. And it's uh one, it's new to all of our firefighters, so that's good. And we can do multiple evolutions. When we do a live burn, it's not, I think some people, people that call and say, hey, can you burn our house down? It's like, well, there's a process to do to do that. We try, we're gonna try to do one a year because it is kind of a logistical monster to pull that off. There's a lot of uh a lot of things we have to do in preparation, but it's not just burn the house down. We're literally there from seven in the morning till about four in the afternoon, doing multiple evolutions through, you know, we start at in the top and work our way down room by room by room is until we get to a point where we've pretty much burned everything we can burn inside of it, and then we burn it down, so.
Chief, you wanna touch on the duty crews, what what that consists of?
So uh this is our third year now, or this will be our third year. We've been doing um Fri- a duty cruise on the weekends between Memorial Day and Ho- and uh Labor Day. Um so that is a, that is a four-hour shift on Friday night and a eight-hour shift on Saturday. And um it does a couple things for us. One, it gives us i- in the summer, you know, our people are no different than everybody else's. Everybody wants to go to the lake, go to the cabin, go do something on the weekend, and you know, it gets tougher and tougher to to make sure that we've got the staff we need there to respond to emergencies, and and we haven't had any issues, but it just, it's very helpful to have this duty crew in place. And then, so it's a three-person crew, so they can respond to uh most calls that come in, and then if they expand on that, if it's a bigger call where they need more resources, then we page everybody out, but uh it's been very successful from a perspective of it allows maybe some of our firefighters that don't live or work close to the station, so maybe they're not on that first truck that often. Um it gets that, gives them a chance to be in that spot where they're the first arriving firefighters, the first arriving uh on the first arriving truck, so it lets them build their um proficiency a little bit, and it's been a fantastic training and team-building exercise, cuz they part of their, I, they always laugh at me because I'll have a to-do list on the wall of you know, the fun stuff like mow the lawn, mop the floor, etc. You know, the fun stuff like mow the lawn, mop the floor, et cetera, but on there, we always have a spot where.
Clean the chief's car?
No, they don't have to, they don't have to clean my car, but learn something and teach something, we make them or want them and they have been great at that, at setting aside. A couple hours for sure to go out, go do something that the crew wants to work on, maybe it's go. To a play, a business or a commercial building that they're not familiar with, or go do pump operations or ladder operations or, you know, so it, it's been. Great, so, um, we will continue to do that, uh, hopefully for a long time here, it's, it's been working really well. Um, page six, that is. Fireman's, dedicated to the Fireman's Park project, so we got various pictures on there from that park. And again, thank you to this group for your support, um, Lynn and her staff on the Parks Department have been fantastic. Um, I think if we had an extra T-shirt, we would have gave it to Chris Hutton, so he could have been. And I remember that day, cause he put in a ton of time down there, uh, Randy has built a ton of stuff and. You mentioned that before about Randy's, a skill set, Randy's, um, Randy Carter at the Parks Department. He, uh, is, if, those that remember, there used to be this little Jeep looking thing, that was the only. Um, thing in the park, um, he took that back and is turning that into a little fire truck. So he's about, I don't know, I've, I've seen the receipts, he must be close to done now, so I think that's gonna go on in the spring. So that little, little Jeep is now a little fire truck, so it'll be back out there at some point as well. But, um, Randy Abelson, our assistant chief, this was kind of, he spearheaded this group to get this done. Um, this Fireman's Park project has been. Off and on and off and on and off again for, how long there, Mr. Mayor, do you remember?
Oh, I think we started in what, oh.
Sounds about right, so we've got a good fifteen years of. Let's try this, what do you think about this, and then we table it for a while and so we finally got it to fruition here, so the park is. Is up and functioning, it was, uh, used heavily there for, until the snow flew and. Um, there'll be a few things added this spring and some final touches that have to be done, that'll probably. Go on for, for spring and summer and then, uh, hopefully it'll be all buttoned up and a hundred percent here sometime this year now. Questions on that?
We were there a couple of weeks after it opened and there were seventy people in the park at once, just when we were there and I.
Seventy, seven, zero?
Yeah, and it was just stacked and my wife and I talked like, there's never been seventy people in that park ever, you know? And it was, it was just great to see, people were loving it.
Well, the more important part, they'd finally give it the thumbs up.
Ben and Charles had been really enjoying the park, so.
That's good, that's good.
It's on the rotation now, so.
And how we gauge things about, about parks, uh, we ask Benny.
Well, when you want an honest answer, you ask like a six-year-old, right, cause they give you the honest answer whether you like it or not. And I do need to point out the stand-in mayor for the ribbon cutting. Thank you, Mr. Shunowski.
With a red shirt, so I look good.
Yeah, I, you know. You had your red shirt on too, so. Alright, um, page seven, just a couple of things I want to hit on, again, we took delivery of our new rescue truck, that's the one pictured there. The individual standing in front of it, um, that was the committee that, that worked on that one. And we, we did that one a very unconventional way to, one, make sure we got what we needed and also to save. Uh, what turned out to be. Probably in the neighborhood of forty to eighty thousand dollars. Um, bought the chassis on state bid, we picked a vendor, we kind of acted as a general contractor, basically. And had it component or pieced out to, to get it put together, cause at the end of the day, it's a pickup. With a utility body and a fire skid in the back and it seemed kind of ridiculous to go through a. Fire vendor and pay close to two hundred thousand when we could build it for a hundred and four, so that's, that's the process we went down, so. That truck has been in service, that's our most utilized vehicle, it goes out on all medicals, it goes out on grass fires. And other just various, uh, pulls all of our trailers. Um, et cetera. And then, uh, the old pickup that replaced it, we've put that, uh, did some repairs to that and that's just kind of a utility pickup. Um, which replaced a, the black pickup that we received from the police department a few years back, so. Page eight. Operational data, so I'm just gonna hit on the twenty twenty-two stuff and kind of go down these. Um, so we have, this is a number of call, this is the emergency calls and some of the specific data. Fires, general, meaning something was burning or smoking, thirty-five calls, structure fires, we had eight. So both of those numbers are pretty low comparatively, which is a good thing. Um, rescues, motor vehicle accidents, seventy-one, medic, medical's a hundred and ninety, that's the highest we've ever had on those. Uh, fire alarms or sprinklers, ninety calls, hazardous conditions, sixty. And other is forty-three and I usually quantify that by saying other means, it's usually something that. They can't figure out who else to call, so they call us. Um, could be anything from something smells funny to, what's that noise, et cetera. Um, emergency calls then total for the year, we had four hundred and ninety-seven, which coincidentally was only one call different from the previous year. And the split was almost exactly the same too, that is not a typo, we had three hundred and eighteen calls within the city limits. And a hundred and seventy-nine out in our rural fire district. So general fires, we had forty-three, that's a combination of the structure fires and the general. Uh, injuries, uh, we only had one notable injury, that's per the OSHA standard. And I do like to just highlight that because considering the. Environment in which we work at the weird time of day and the weird time of weather. People waking up in the middle of the night, jumping in a fire truck to go climb a ladder and get on somebody's roof and do something, the fact that we only had one injury is. Is pretty awesome, so, and that number, if you look historically, is usually. One, two, zero, four has been our, our highest number we've ever had, so. Um, fire, uh, fire fatalities, we had zero fatalities last year, which is good. Unfortunately, you know, twenty-one, if you look back a year, we had two that year. And prior to that, we had an eight-year run of zero, which, which is good, so unfortunately, twenty-one was a high one for us. Response time, that's from the time we get alarmed to the truck out the door, five minutes and twenty-one seconds. And then, um, officer only calls, so a hundred and twenty-three times of that four ninety-seven. Is just one fire officer, so myself or whoever the on-call fire officer is going directly to the scene, usually it's a non-emergent situation. To. Help somebody with a smoke detector issue, a carbon dioxide issue, a gas leak. Um, we've tried to kind of quantify those smaller or, or less, uh. You know, less emergent calls and push that to that one person, so doing, doing so, one, it saves us. You know, twenty-five, twenty-seven thousand dollars in estimated labor costs. But it also more and and from my perspective, more importantly, saves eighteen hundred hours, eighteen hundred forty-five hours of firefighter labor. So that's people can stay at their job, stay with their families or stay with whatever they're doing and not have to respond down for those calls, so that program. We've been doing that for. Hmm, twelve to fifteen years now and it, uh, it works well. Page nine. Uh, estimated property value saved, four million, two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, that, that is by us. Showing up and extinguishing the fire or mitigating the situation before it extended, maybe a garage fire that we were able to. Keep into the garage and and the house was saved, that type of, uh, situation, that's how we calculate that. The most important number, four lives saved, um, and we're pretty judicious with how we, when we count that, that means that's somebody that. Had we not showed up and did our job, would not be here today because of that. Property value lost was really low this year, two hundred and sixteen thousand. Emergency call hours, two thousand seven hundred thirty-one in the city, two thousand three hundred sixty-five in the rural. That's as close as that's ever been, it's usually actually quite, it's usually quite a bit higher in the rural. Because those calls are typically a longer duration call, three, four, five hours sometimes, so. Um, that's, that's the first time it's been lopsided that I can recall and, uh, usually it's the other way around. Total training hours, three thousand seventy-three, total training events, fifty-six. So we train every Monday night unless it's a holiday. Um, for usually two hours, uh, last Monday night was a three-hour medical training. So two to three hours every Monday night, so just so people kind of understand how we function over there. Um, public relations and fire safety education, again, it's one of our priorities, we did thirty-six. PR events, seven hundred fifty-six hours. And we had eleven fire safety education events for a hundred and ninety-two hours and we had one thousand five hundred eighty-five students that. We either went, that's, a lot of those are at the schools, when we do, we did Tiger Elementary for the first time this year. Um, in lieu of Park, because the second graders are now over at Tiger. And then we did West Elementary as usual and then some other ones, so some of them, some of that fifteen hundred and eighty-five are people that come through. The fire station too, whether it's tours or groups that come in that want a fire safety message for their, for, for their organization. Uh, page ten. Uh, goals for next year. I do want, I'm just gonna touch on a couple of those, um. We started a committee this, uh, in our, uh. At the beginning, the first Tuesday of this month in February, we have our annual meeting with our rural townships, uh, where we. Recap this, the annual report and we recap the, um. The budget and set, uh, set the assessment for the year and kind of just culminate everything from the fire service. And, uh, so we've, we're starting a committee to replace the Polaris Ranger, which is our off-road rescue slash grass rig vehicle. Uh, that's a shared vehicle between the city and the rural. And then we've just formed our committee to look at, um, the options on our ladder truck, you know, we've been talking about that. Off and on a little bit and it's, it's looming out there and it's a big, that's a big expense, so we're gonna look at every option. Um, to do that, whether it's a refurb or a replacement and really kind of hammer those numbers out, so we know. We can come to the fleet committee and have, have actual data. And then the other thing I'll, I'll touch on here is we are gonna host in the spring, this will be the first time we've ever done this. We're gonna have a hands-on one-day, uh, school out at our training site for the region, so we're hoping to get. Uh, we're gonna have outside instructors come in and do this, so we're gonna have auto extrication classes, high-level rescue classes, search and rescue, live burns. Um, and we're gonna have that in mid-April, they're working on the flyers right now, so we're hoping to get. Seventy-five to a hundred firefighters from around the area to come in for a one-day class, uh, at our training site, so. Hopefully it goes well and then we'll see if we can turn it into an annual event out there. And then the other thing I would do want to touch on is, is Matt and I have talked about this a lot, uh, lately here, we've got. Two of our, our assistant chief and our battalion chief, uh, will both be retiring within the next. Four to five years, um, which they are our two biggest day responders, they're. Super engaged and active in every aspect of our department and that's gonna leave a, that's gonna leave a hole when they go, so we're trying to. Make sure we're setting ourselves up, uh. For the next level of leaders in our, in our department, so we're having a lot of focus on what we need for our staffing and then what we need for trainings to make sure that we're. Prepared for that. Alright, page eleven, vehicle maintenance, I'm not gonna touch on this, this is just kind of the spreadsheet that we put together, so you can kind of see what every apparatus. What the expenses are, uh, the previous years and then the miles and hours that we, uh, used it in the calendar year. Any questions or comments on anything on that page, otherwise I'll jump to the next one. Okay, page twelve, um, that is our CIP, um, that mirrors, uh, everything that. Um, in the city CIP and then if you, if you kind of look at how. Uh, how it's laid out there, everything in highlighted in yellow are vehicles that are city-owned only, hundred percent city. The two blue tankers are rural-owned, that's our, um, tankers again. And then everything in kind of the orange color is a shared fifty-fifty piece of equipment, so. Um, any questions, everything else is kind of just some pictures of, uh, the firefighters in action and. Alright, well, thank you, uh, as usual for the support, we appreciate it and if you guys have questions or comments, don't feel, or don't hesitate to. Reach out, appreciate it.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, yeah, thank you. Thanks, chief. Alright, we'll, we'll back to the public hearing. Uh, second reading and adoption of ordinance number twenty-three dash eight thirty-seven. Ordinance granting franchise renewal to Citizens Bank and Trust Company. Mike, did you rack it? See, Tom, that's why we had you here tonight. We're gonna do it.
For Citizens Bank to have this awning over First Avenue Southwest. Um, they've requested of the city that the franchise be granted to them once again for a period of twenty years. Uh, the agreement is what I would call our standard agreement as far as making sure the city is properly insured for any damages that, damages that occur. Um, but the reason why there's a public hearing tonight is our city charter says anytime we grant a franchise or has to be an opportunity for the. Public to speak on the topic, so that's why the public hearing was scheduled for this evening and. Uh, if there's any members of the public that want to speak on this topic, obviously, this is their opportunity to. Come forward and speak on it, I did want to mention that unfortunately, there aren't any, uh, representatives from Citizens Bank here tonight. They had a previously scheduled executive board meeting tonight. So they weren't able to come, um, I did tell them that if there was, uh, something that needed to be further addressed, that I would ask that the hearing be continued to the next meeting. But, uh. If that happens, well, let's cross that bridge when we get to it.
Alright, open it up for public comment.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Tim to close the public hearing. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, Gary. Motion to grant the. To the ordinance, yeah.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Motion by Chad, second by Steve. To approve the ordinance. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, Gary.
Thank you very much.
Uh, uh, no unfinished business, new business, entering contract with Civic Systems for Software Services.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, so Andy Reed did a great job in his board action forum, kind of explaining the whole project. The only thing I would do is add a couple of things where, when we moved to B S and A, we know that the reporting was an issue. That was something we were just gonna have to deal with and I know over the years it's been frustrated for, for the finance department. Recently, we've had some issues with payroll as well. And so that kind of prompted us, let's go back and see where we're at with Civic, because we knew they were in the process of rewriting their software with a new language. Um, after making that connection and talking with them, um, right off the bat. Because we had licensing with them before, they discounted it a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, so that was more palatable to. Really dig into the software, we ended up going through, doing demos for all the departments and everybody is on board to make this change. The only caveat is the building department and we are looking for another solution for them.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second it. Motion by Chad, second by myself to approve, any other discussion? Own favor, say aye. I oppose, carry.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Uh, minutes, reports from committees, boards or commissions, we have Hutchinson Utility Commission minutes from December twel- uh, twenty-first. Two thousand twenty fir- oh my gosh, we'll start over. Hutchinson Utilities Commission minutes from December tw- twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two, preliminary city of Hutchinson. December twen- December two thousand twenty-two financial inv- investment reports. EDA board minutes from January ninth, two thousand twenty-three, Public Arts Commission minutes from January eleventh, two thousand twenty-three. Chief Gifferson, you have anything for us? Uh, Mike, do you have anything for us? If you wanna come up a little bit and. So everybody can hear ya.
I, I might have passed, I know. Uh, we have another bid opening tomorrow, we're hoping for another favorable bid, so, uh, more information to follow on it and then just a reminder, weather, mother nature is not done with us yet, uh. And so, uh, watch the weather tomorrow morning, it looks like it'll be first of the morning, so.
Alright, thank you. Chief Schuman, you got anything else for us? Justin, anything? Tom? Alright, thank you. Uh, Mark?
Nothing else.
Nothing? Uh, let's see, you know, I'm just falling off the board today and. See, we got, uh, well, we were gonna start with Pat, but he's not here, so Pat, you don't have nothing, okay, Chad?
Nothing, just happy Valentine's Day out there for you lovebirds. That's why we're here now, right, so, but nothing official.
Tim, you got anything for us?
I know, it was great, thank you.
Alright, Dave?
Sure, right, yeah, no.
You got a date, don't ya, you got a date, alright, man.
Um, just a reminder, city offices will be closed on Monday for the President's Day holiday and then. Um, I know I sent an email out about trying to s- schedule a meeting, a joint meeting with Hutch Utilities, I know. I think Tim's gonna be gone next week, so maybe look sometime after that, but. Um, maybe try to push for the mornings and, you know, I've kinda got some feedback from you guys, but just kinda look for that and, uh, in the future, I'll try to give you a heads up with some potential dates, so.
You know, one time we, I think we did kinda talk to Jeremy about maybe having a tour of the plants too.
It's possible, yeah, I think, I mean, that's something we would discuss at that meeting, cause this is more just kind of a informational on kinda where all the operations and stuff are, so.
Alright, sounds good.
That's it for me, so.
Well, it's Valentine's Day, let's go home.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Chad, second by Dave to.